Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for June 17th, 2024. The first matter on our agenda is the approval of the June 3rd, 2024 minutes. I did have one correction. I called Peter and he said he was going to amend it. It was under Conne Square where it said Attorney Tenzau had abstained from voting on the matter, and then it said the vote was passed five in favor and not against, so he amended that to four in favor and one abstained. That was the only correction I brought out and staff said they will change that. Any other board members have any comments or corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the amended verbiage that you just described.
I second.
Motion made and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The agenda tonight, we do have three public hearings and we've been informed late this afternoon that there's been a request for continuance for Conne Square. So let me take that one first so people won't have to wait around to get to the request. So site plan review, 17 Conne Square. Sun Building LLC has applied to Lowell Planning Board to construct an additional unit at the building located at 17 Conne Square. The property is located in the downtown mixed-use zoning district in the multifamily mid-rise overlay district. The project requires site plan approval per Section 11.4.2 (2) for expansion of a structure with more than 13 dwelling units. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, before you go forward, I need to recuse myself from this.
So we'll have our alternate voting this evening and Ms. Tenzau will not. Okay. Go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
Good evening, gentlemen. Trudy Hale for the applicant. We are requesting adjournment. I apologize for the late nature of the request. It came to my attention that the architect did not get the elevations to the board with enough time for you to really evaluate them, for which I do apologize. In addition, we have seen some of the comments from abutters and we have met with Peter Catrumbus and with the architect and some additional members of the building and we believe we have a solution. And so we would like an opportunity to adjourn this till the next meeting, which I believe is July 17th. We will get new elevations and plans to the board. I was told by the architect today, he promised to have them by the end of the month. So you would have them with two weeks to spare.
Okay, so does a request for continuance, any of the board members have any questions in regards to the continuance? One thing I am looking at, I think our next meeting is July 15th. Correct, on a Monday?
July 15th. There you go, right. Thank you.
Yes. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I'm the resident of 17 Conne.
Yes, sir.
And the floor plans that were submitted don't have a grade level plan. If it's possible to consider this property for developing back at a grade level plan.
And that's what the architect will be providing.
And number two, this drawing which hangs up in front of 17 Conne has our same one. And yet, the first floor plan is antiquated excluding a 13 by 26-foot part of the building where the coking over the trash of all the residences of 15 Conne, 17 Conne, the Blue Tower Restaurant, and two new business establishments are. So definitely, they don't exist. So I sincerely request that a grade level plan is presented. And why you have to wait a month, this is a longer over here.
No, the application was only submitted the most recent, May 2nd. It hasn't been going.
So we'll request embedded plans too, sir. I saw them and the last ones I got was on Friday and to me, that was way not acceptable on a Friday. Not when City Hall's closed at 12:00. The department heads haven't seen them yet. I looked at the plans. I said it last time, we need much better plans than these. The plans are insufficient, then the application doesn't go forward. They have to meet our standards. It's the boilerplate. It's one of the only things you can really shoot down a site plan for if the plans are inadequate. So if the plans aren't up to date, when they come back in a month from now, we'll be voting on that.
Well, Chairman, I've told the architect that and he assures me that you'll get adequate plans.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. I mean, you know, it's up to the architect to get the drawings in and hopefully they're going to amend plenty of times so everybody can look at them ahead of time and have a chance to digest them, as well as the neighbors, as well as city department head, as well as the planning board members themselves. And maybe even speaking with the neighbors before you come back next time might be a good idea because we received, one, two, three, four, five, maybe five letters, and a lot of the letters said we don't understand what's going on there. Is that gateway being blocked? Is that going to be open or closed? And I read all the letters like, I don't know. I look at the plans at night, still don't know. So if maybe some of those answers could answer a lot of the people's questions before they come before the meeting, I'm sure they'll be helpful. We can't tell you to meet with them, but we can make a suggestion. So what's the request of the board that requests a continuance to July 15th?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue the matter until the July 15th Planning Board meeting.
I second the motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Mitchell, we have you on Zoom as well? Okay, yeah. So for him, Attorney Tenzau is not voting, but our alternate is, okay? All right, continue to July 15th. Good luck. Hopefully we'll have all the adequate plans by then. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along on the agenda, let's get back to, we have, what's it, 63 Chambers Street. We have a site plan review and a special permit, 63 Chambers Street. Lexia Estates LLC has applied to the Lowell Planning Board to seek to demolish the existing structure at 63 Chambers Street and construct two, three-unit residential buildings on the site. The subject property is located in a traditional multifamily zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval from the Lowell Planning Board per Section 11.4 for redevelopment with greater than three residential units and a special permit approval from the Lowell Planning Board per Article 12.1. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Attorney Katherine Flood here on behalf of Lexia Estates LLC. Here with me tonight is the engineer Matt Hammer and my client Robert Fard. We are here tonight requesting site plan approval and a special permit. The property is in the traditional multifamily zoning district. Since the last hearing, the following issues have been addressed. The fire department has approved the plan. We have revised the site plan to show offense to mark the boundary between the property and the city properties. We have reduced the number of bedrooms from three bedrooms to two bedrooms so we meet the parking requirements. We have appeared before the City of Lowell zoning board of appeals and we received the variances. And the City of Lowell passed Lowell Forward, the city's new master plan that outlines the city's objectives moving forward. As members of the planning board, it's your job to review, endorse, and implement the master plan. Some of the objectives set forth in the master plan are as follows. Identify, make more housing more affordable by building more, to make sure there's enough homes for everyone. The city needs more density throughout the city, not just in downtown. Be resource efficient. Multi-unit development requires less land, water, and energy than single-family homes. Add to the housing stock. Part of the master plan goals is to increase the housing unit by 3,150 by 2030. Add more starter homes, such as townhomes. Add more multi-unit housing in close proximity to the Gallagher Terminal and bus stops that provide access to the commuter rail. Add more housing, since the rate of new housing is not meeting the needs of Lowell's growing population. Beautification of sidewalks, trees, and landscaping. Increase the tax revenue and generate more resources to maintain quality public services. Reduce the heat island effect by buildings casting shadows. Add growth in already dense areas to support walkability. Increase accessibility to parks, provide safer parks. Based on the new master plan, this development satisfies all of the above objectives, as the city set forth and this board voted on on May 6th. We would request that the site plan approval and the special permit be approved. This development is a good way to repurpose the lot. The development, as proposed, reduces the amount of pavement, adds drainage, there's significant green space around the lot, and the building meets the height requirement. Prior to filing our initial application, we met with the planning department. We also met with the building commissioner. They all told us that this was a good project and it was good for the city. We made plans after meeting with them based on their comments. They said it's a strong project and aligns with the master plan. Since being here previously, we have been able to meet with some of the people within the neighborhood and we have gotten some letters supporting the development, as well as people that signed the petition to support this development. May I approach?
Yes. Yeah, we received these in our packet. Yeah, okay, thank you though. Yeah.
We also received a letter from, or an email from Dave Pullak confirming the height requirement. That was an issue that was brought up last time we were here. That should have also been in the packet. And we also received an email from Jessica Wilson saying that she thought the project was good for the city. That should have also been included. That should have also been included within the package. I'm going to let Matt take over and show you the changes we made to the site plan since the last time we were here, as well as the unit plans.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Hammer, Landplex Engineering and Surveying, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. There's been one change. The change was that we've added the split.
Yeah, could you just push it back a little further so these people over here can see it as well?
So LTC has said that we need to work here.
Oh, okay. Oh, the LTC, she doesn't get it?
Yeah.
Okay, good enough.
Maybe we need another camera.
Maybe.
This is my favorite area over here.
I know. You like it over there.
Yeah.
I like being out of the camera.
Yes, exactly.
Is it possible to turn that on? I'm wondering. No?
It would take a moment, but we could ask LTC to, if it's possible, if the planning board would like, we can pause and see if LTC can set up the projector.
Sure.
Thank you, friend.
Thank you.
Okay. So take a recess.
We'll take a five-minute recess while we check with LTC to see if they can put the screen up behind us. Thank you. Sure.
So you have two projects today? Busy time. Busy time.
Okay, we're back on, yes.
I should have brought my pointer.
Yeah, so the applicant has now put the screen up above us so more people can see.
So essentially, the board requested that we put in a split rail fence. And we've incorporated a split rail fence along the easterly side of the property and we've also provided a split rail fence detail that's also been added to the plan. One of the other changes is that the third bedroom has been removed from the floor plans. So now that this is, this project's going to be a two-bedroom units for each one. So there's no longer going to be a variance request for the parking, which if you have three bedrooms, as you know, is .75 per bedroom, which requires you to have 2.25 spaces. So now the parking is adequate for the requirement for parking. Additionally, there was a comment related to the diameter of the trees. We changed the diameters from two feet to two inches so that that's not an issue as well. And since our last meeting, there was a comment from the fire department, which was the primary reason why we continued the last meeting. I met with the fire department and that issue has been resolved. They find that this project does have adequate access after speaking with them directly. So that's been an outstanding comment from a municipal department that been resolved. We've had discussions related to the drainage system with the stormwater team and we've gone through the methodology of that as well with them and they were positive towards the development in terms of that review. Additionally, this project will also go through the Conservation Commission, which will look more closely at the DEP standards for the development and which we have provided a full stormwater report for this development, which will be in compliance with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection stormwater regulations, as well as the city's stormwater regulations. And that's all the changes that we have related from our last meeting. Essentially, the site plan is materialistically looks the same. And I can take any questions from the board if needed.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody else on the applicant? Anybody else want to speak on the applicant? Nope? I'm going to get to that in a minute. I just wanted to see if anybody, part of the applicant wants to speak. And then I'll read the letters that were handed to us from Attorney Flood. Anything further?
Okay.
Nope? Okay, for this time, I'm going to open up to people in favor and I'll read what we got in our packet and what Attorney Flood gave us tonight. This is from Jason Mello, Operations Project, Citywide Properties, Citywide. Dear Mr. Linehan, Citywide Properties, has been a proud Lowell business owner for over 35 years. The Mello family, well, longtime residents of Back Central for decades and are still actively involved in the Back Central community. We are lifelong communicants of St. Anthony's Church, 893 Central Street. We are lifeline members of the Portuguese-American Center, 59 Charles Street. We are proud donors of the opening of the Lowell Police Department Youth, Barkton Gym, 739 Central Street. We are participants in the City of Lowell, adopt an island program and maintain the island at Horford Square, intersection of Central and Wamisit Street, with a picture enclosed. Currently, we own and operate over 30 rental units in Back Central. Our office is located 614th Central Street at Horford Square, in the very heat of the neighborhood. We consider ourselves not just property owners, but stewards of the Back Central community. We strongly support the proposed additions of the six townhouses at 63 Chambers Street and feel that increased homeownership will strengthen the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration. This is Jason Mello. As indicated, they showed a picture of Horford Square. Then we received a letter for the Coalition from Better Acre. I'm emailing you to express coalition on Better Acre's support for the proposed six townhouses at 63 Chambers Street in Lowell. CBA developed and owns property in the Back Central neighborhood of Lowell and we firmly believe the proposed six-townhome project at Chambers Street will provide much-needed housing to the neighborhood. Additionally, CBA believes this will be a welcome addition to Lowell's housing stock, a stock the city has made a specific goal to expand to the immediate future. We are excited to see the team of 63 Chambers Street build the beautiful proposed townhomes in that neighborhood. Thanks, Brendan Cooley, Estate Project Manager, Coalition Better Acre, 15 Moody Street, 3rd Floor. And then we have some signatures in favor. People on Chambers Street, Watson Street, Prospect Street, another Chambers Street, Central Street, Lawman Street, Chapel Street, Thorne Dyke Street, Central Street, Lawman Street, Church Street, Crosby Street, Pleasant Street, Crosby, Pleasant, Pleasant, Lawrence, Agawam, with a total of 20 signatures in favor. We'll put that as part of the record for the board. And at this time, if anybody likes to speak in favor of the project, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, members. My name is Raymond Wyker. I live at 14 Watson Street, Unit 18. I am down the street from the proposed development and I sit on the board for my condominium association of 20 units, back where the old Maglite Mill used to be. We are in favor of this project. Honestly, if you could make seven on there, we would be even more in favor of it. And we are in favor of it for a very simple reason. Having more starter homes, townhomes, in the neighborhood improves the value of all homes, including our own homes. There is empirical research, data-driven, that shows beyond any doubt that the introduction of more starter homes into a neighborhood that has urban density increases the value of all of the homes in the neighborhood. So when you add homes to an already dense area, adding more starter homes increases the value of all existing homes, including those that are the same size. It brings up the neighborhood in general. We also have all kinds of data that has been studied across the country, showing without any doubt whatsoever that when you restrict the number of units, you actually increase rents and you decrease home values in an area. So we would like to see this development go through because it is good for the neighborhood. More importantly, there is, well, stacks of research that basically show that non-conforming uses in an area are detrimental unless they are somehow driving economic development. And what we have here is we have an area that is zoned for multifamily and instead we have commercial garages, which I don't know if you've been to my neighborhood, they're an eyesore. They're a danger zone. They are trouble waiting to happen. They are a place where in the mornings you will find empty bottles or hypodermic needles. We don't want them. We want them gone. We want homes there. How do you avoid crime? You avoid crime by putting in people who are around to keep their eyes on the neighborhood. You avoid these issues by bringing in families. Even though these units are now restricted to two bedrooms and are somewhat hostile to young families, we're still in favor of them because even starting-out families are extra eyes in the neighborhood. We want our neighborhood improved. We want our parks to be used by kids and by families, right? Right now, the parks down there are not really well-used because they are not well-lit or well-observed. There are very few houses that abut them. Having more is better. We're in favor of this because research, undeniable research, shows that increasing the density in that area, building more starter homes, will have two effects. One, it helps to mitigate rents. Rents go up faster where there are fewer homes available for the very simple reason that people at the top of that economic ladder that cannot afford the next largest home are now forced to rent and they bid up prices. When there are more homes available, those otherwise high bidders are taken out of the bidding. And that helps to keep rents in control. It benefits both the people buying and the people renting who have not yet been able to afford to buy. So I'm asking this board to approve this plan, all right? We want to see in our neighborhood, we want to see more families, we want to see more kids in the park. We don't want to see an area wasted with garage space that is being used to store items from God only knows where and attracting all kinds of trouble after dark. So please, please, members of the board, do what's right for the city. Do what's right for my neighborhood. Help us build these homes. Don't be the obstacle to progress. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? At this point, anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Jason Vines. I reside at 94 Kinsman Street, which is approximately 150 feet from the lot of this redevelopment plan. I've lived on this street for nearly 50 years. I am here in opposition to the petitioner's redevelopment of 63 Chambers Street for several reasons of which I would like to share with the board this evening. I would like to start by stating that I currently rent one of the units from the current owner since their purchase of the property just seven months ago. However, I have been renting this garage space for the last 25 years from the previous owner. While I understand that the new owner wishes to expand their property, it is ultimately their responsibility to follow the current zoning code and ordinances, of which this redevelopment falls short. The petitioner is asking for variances that would not allow for proper landscaping and most egregious, the lack of minimal usable open space. It is simply too many units for this size lot. I would like the board to consider two nearby comparison properties that are similar in lot size, however, they are building less units per square foot. The first being 13 Irving Street, the property was just around the corner from this one. They was approved to build two separate buildings with two units of approximately 7,000 square feet. The second being 68 and 84 Kinsman Street, which is just three homes away from this property, they was just approved to build one, a single building with two units on a similar-sized lot of 8,000 square feet. I would like to emphasize that I am extremely concerned that the city approving this petition as presented. I continue to ask myself, and I respectfully ask this board to do the same, how can the city approve a three-foot side setback to an almost 35-foot tall building? How can the city approve a two-foot front setback to an almost 35-foot tall building? How can the city allow an existing beautiful mural that's painted that the city paid for, I believe, artwork on one side of this building to just be simply torn down? How can the city allow not two, not four, but six units to be built with less than 140 square feet of usable open space? The petitioner's attorney had previously stated that this project would have a positive impact on the area. I couldn't disagree. I couldn't disagree more. I am deeply saddened that the new owner, who I assume has no intention of living in this neighborhood, is not taking into consideration the negative impact that this redevelopment will have on the thirteen current renters that will inevitably be forced out of their garage space if the project is allowed to proceed. I would like to recognize and appreciate the fact that the pre-planning and design of this project was quite extensive and that the building, while looking nice in design, in my opinion, does not appropriately fit within this small lot or this neighborhood. If this project is approved as presented, they will be knocking down two structures that are approximately ten feet high and replacing them with two structures nearly thirty-five feet high, more than three times higher than what is currently there. Its size and scale are overwhelming, in between two city-owned, in between a city-owned park and a city-owned open space. I am certain that this board is well-aware that the Back Central area is a very active and congested space, limited on parks, landscaping, space between homes, and, most importantly, parking. Yes, it would be sad for me to lose this garage space that I have had for so long, but I hope that this board will uphold our city's high standards of good zoning practices. We need to preserve the character of our Back Central streets as well as consider the negative impact a project of this size will have on the nearby residents and families who actually live in and use this area every day. Thank you for allowing me to be heard and to voice my concerns.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Arthur Vines from ninety-four Kinsman Street. I also have been living there for more than sixty years. My family have lived there more than ninety years in that particular area. What I see is, is the size of that lot is seven thousand square feet. I can't see six buildings on seven thousand square feet. I could see three buildings on that lot. Move them over. Move them in the middle. Have some greenery. Have some parking. They're saying they cut back from three bedrooms to two bedrooms. Okay, you're going to have two cars under. One in ten, you know, guarantee, there's going to be overflow parking. Where are they going to park? Right now, that's, that street in that area is full. Now you're putting myself, my brother, and other residents on the street. I know you people probably haven't been there in the winter. I've lived there for sixty years, and the winter is ridiculous. Yes, they have made some requirements for the snow. It is ridiculous. We have to get off the street and find parking. Granted, they have their two spots, but, you know, the two-bedroom to the three-bedroom, after the sale, I believe they'll get, they're going to do what they want. There's going to be a third bedroom in there. I know it, and so does everybody else. So where is that extra vehicle going to park? It's a question. Still the same idea as what my brother had, thirty-five feet? Granted, the GMF is thirty-five feet, but to put that size of a structure aside of a park is ridiculous. All you're going to look at is a wall. When there is a mural there, I'm all for him building that and having more affordable housing, but why don't you put four? Why don't you put four and have some more greenery? Why don't you put four and have your overflow parking in your own parcel? I've got this property seventy-six, eighty, and eighty-four Kinsman. I had owned it. I sold it a few years ago to somebody, which I know the family, and I was happy to do so because I could not take care of it anymore because of a medical condition. They are allowing their overflow parking and reconfiguring the lot size to put it on their own parcel. You know the overflow parking is going to go in the street, and like I said, I'm going to be in the street, and it does sadden me. I've been there for twenty-five years. I'm going to be forced in the street, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this time, I'll turn it over to the board members for any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Fischette?
In looking at the, the application that was submitted, and we also did get the results of the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting relative to the variances that were granted and also the, which I thought was interesting, the condition of the reflecting paint to address the heat island effect on the pavement. In looking at what's currently there on the site and talking about enforcing zoning, the current use is non-conforming with the TMF zoning. So this is actually putting what's on the site in conformance with really the zoning and what the intent is in the neighborhood. It is a unique location. We've looked at projects in the past that have properties that are budding on either side in the rear that are really close. This property is, as stated, between a city park and some land that's actually owned by the city that actually, not much you can do with because it's in the, it's in the buffer zone, and so it's very limited what you can do with it, and it's being used for, for parking currently. And there's no homes behind it because you've got the wetlands in the back. So honestly, if it, if it met the minimum usable open space requirement and it didn't have the park and it didn't have the land available in the back, there actually would be less land for the people that live there to actually enjoy it. So when we look at, at whether or not a project meets the usable open space, one of the things we'll consider is the distance it's located to a city park. Well, this is, this is your backyard. This is your side yard, so the, the families will have use of it. And it was a good point that was made. Quite frankly, the more eyes you have on that park, the, the less activity you'll have that's probably less desirable because you will have people there, will probably calling the police if there's activity going on that's not favorable. So I see a positive effect there. Currently, there's no stormwater management on the site. This is obviously going to add some stormwater management, but again, like I said, does not currently exist. Looking at the design of the building, I feel that a lot was put into that so that it will, it will fit in. It'll actually be a nice addition. It'll look better than some of the older multifamilies that are, that are currently in the neighborhood. A lot of the properties that are there are right close to the sidewalk, to the street, and we talk about consistency in the development of a neighborhood so that something fits into the neighborhood, and that, this is keeping with the surrounding properties for the most part when you look at the development of most of that neighborhood. So you've got a unique situation. You've got a piece of property that has more open space on either side of it than any property around it, across the street, the side streets, you've got the park, the wetlands, the parking on the side. It no longer requires a variance for the parking. We can dispute whether that's sufficient or not, and is, obviously, there's a move to look at even the parking requirement that we currently have on the books and whether that's even too onerous. And as we look to develop in areas that have access to the bus terminal, which was noted here as well, in the Gallagher Terminal, that there is some options for residents. So it's not necessarily as car-centric as some of the other neighborhoods. Obviously, that it's, you know, the cars are an issue in that neighborhood. They definitely are, but this meets the zoning requirement. The fire department has signed off on this, and I do think it's, it's an addition of some quality housing in the area. It's putting the site into conformance as far as the actual use to be in keeping with the neighborhood. And at this point, I'm, I'm satisfied with the, with the fence that we talked about. It's more of a, I, I think we just wanted to have it for more of a demarcation, but in reality, I'm, I'm assuming people that are going to live there are going to want to have access to the park and use the park, and perhaps will take some ownership of the park as well and make sure that there's not illicit activity going on there as well. So from that perspective, I certainly understand some of the frustration, especially with residents that may be utilizing the parking garages that are there right now, and I recognize that that creates perhaps a, a difficult situation if it's something that you've been using for some time. So I certainly understand that. And there are some challenges with, I think, when you look at the, the other areas in the neighborhood, this particular site has a unique, a unique location because of the open space around it. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, I'll wait to hear what the other committee members have to say, but I'm generally in favor of what is before us.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fischette? Any other board members have any comments? Questions?
Chairman, I-
Yes, Caleb?
So, oh, first of all, I appreciate the fence. I think, I think I partly suggest that, so I appreciate the addition of the fence. I concur in part of Member Fischette's observation that the zoning have been met because of the variance. I know, understand the zoning board have jurisdiction there. But also, I recognize is that the building commissioners are okay with the building height, which will be within thirty-five feet. So, so even though I do think the free-foot setback is tight and you do, you know, in, in proportion to the building height, the development proposed is satisfying the height requirement. So I recognize is that. With regard to the open space, I, I also acknowledge that that will help, the park being next door, I mean, in, in front of them will help, but I, I will also think that, you know, I, I do have some concern with, you know, how, how the resident may take ownership of the park. It can go both ways from there. So I may look a little different on that note, but I, I still think is, the setback is tight, but again, the CBA have jurisdiction there. So I, I still think it's dense, but, but with the zoning requirement met, I, I would see merit for, for the approval of the site plan. One question I wish to ask the applicant is, I know it was, it was floated last time that there could be some improvement that your client might make on the, the non-park side of the ceiling. Is that still in play or whether that is out of the picture now?
I, I don't believe we can make it on, I thought with the wetlands, we couldn't do it on one side, but we could do it on the other.
Oh, okay. Maybe I have it confused, but.
No, so we had, at the last meeting, suggested that we could do some improvements-
Oh, on this side?
On this side.
I see.
And we, we still are most certainly amenable to doing that and working with DPD to do some plantings over here.
Great. I, I would appreciate that. So, so in terms of parking, I, I share the same. On that one, I agree with Member Fischette's observation as well. I mean, it's, it's down the road from the train station and bus station, so it's within walkable distance. So I know people can still use their car, but, but that is a mitigating factor to, to any parking concerns. And I also recognize the reduction, oh, go ahead.
I'd like to add something. A lot of times, we have projects in that it's been offered up that the city has a fair amount of trees at their disposal to plant. There's a, there's a program incorporated in the city, and I think this would be a great area to incorporate that into this, into this project because we have a significant amount of space there, and it seems like they have a lot of trees that they want to plant, but a lot of times, our projects can, they don't necessarily incorporate them in. So I just figured I'd make a comment related to that.
So I could suggest adding, adding mentioning of that program in, in the condition if we're going to condition improvement to the park side. And that's why I was speaking. Regarding parking, I, I, again, recognize is close, close to the train station and bus station is within walkable distance, so I think that's a mitigated factor in the parking concern. And then lastly, the reduction of the bedroom reduces the, the usable space requirements. I've, I've read on the report, just wanted to confirm that with Attorney Flood. Reducing, or, or with staff as well, does reducing the bedroom reduce the usable area?
Um, no, because the, that's on a per-unit basis.
Okay.
Not on a per-bedroom. The bedroom affects the parking required.
Got it. But CBA does approve the, the, the variance on the usable open space, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah, so those are my observations, and I would like to hear from the other members of the board as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Attorney Tenta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What struck me when I, when I heard various speakers was that they were talking about parking, they were talking about open space, and those are things that apparently aren't before us. Those are things that are before the zoning board, and apparently, the zoning board has already passed those things. I'm struck by, I'm struck, and I'm still struck, and I haven't been able to get it out of my head because I was thinking about it all weekend. I've been by the area a number of times, and what strikes me is a thirty-five-foot wall three feet from the street on both sides. Over the weekend, I also, we also received some material for another meeting, and it was another project, and one of the things that struck me is, is if I pull up to the edge of the roadway, how much room is in my, my, my engine, the, the front, the hood? I don't know, three, four feet? And I'm still sitting in the, the compartment, so I'm wondering, okay, how do I see down these streets? What is the safety on that? That was just something that, that struck me over the weekend, but I'm still troubled by the density, Attorney Flood. I think I might have mentioned it the last time. Six units in this small area, I think it's more fit for four. I, I mentioned it the, the last time, and, and I think it should be set back so there is adequate room for a site. It's just the scale that I, I just can't get over and, and the fact that most of this, most of this lot is being taken up with buildings. I like the, I think I mentioned it the last time, too. I like the project. That's what's, that's what's troubling me. I like the project, but I like four instead of six. So I guess I'm not in favor of six. I'm in favor of four. I know we have both a site plan review and a special permit, so that's where I'm leaning.
Can I respond? So you keep going back to the density, and I read the master plan. The master plan clearly states they want more density. They want more density outside of the downtown area. This is something the city wants. You also talk about the size and the space that the buildings are taking up. We're actually reducing the amount of space the buildings are taking up. We're adding more drainage, more green space in the back. We're reducing that space. Pertaining to having the buildings closer to the street, that's what the zoning wants. They like the buildings close to the street to have a walkable neighborhood. So pertaining to all of these things you've raised, they're all in conformance with what the city is looking for. So kind of when we went in with our plan and we sat with the planning department, these are all things they asked us to address, and they looked favorably on the development.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Flood. I must disagree with the zoning department, but I, I do appreciate what you guys are trying to do. You're obviously trying to work with- You're obviously trying to work with the city to come up with the best proposal. I'm still in disagreement, but so be it.
And I want to add on that, too. I acknowledge the low-four plan that we adopt, but at the same time, I don't, I think density is a range, and more density doesn't mean all the density you can fit. So, I do have, if I'm not clear earlier, I do have similar concerns with Member Tensa that, like, you know, we're trying to fit a lot in here, and that is a problem that are of a concern. But I don't disagree, we need more housing, but to what degree? I think that is, that there is some room of discussion there, for discussion there, so...
I actually disagree with my colleagues. I'm actually surprised that you took out the third bedroom. I think it very much does go with the plan. Again, in, you know, having visited that space, visiting that area, the green space around it, in line with everything else that's around there, and again, based on what we have stated that we need in the plan, I think this looks good. I think it meets everything. I was impressed by the number of people that wrote to us in favor of it, the comments there. And, you know, I think at some point, we have to say when and where the density can be and where we can have that, because we say an awful lot of where it can't be, and I think this seems to be like one of those times where it really fits with everything. I like the changes that were made, the fences around, so I would be in favor of it.
Mr. Luckhart, you there? I got a text from Mitch, and I responded back to him. He said he lost his volume. And I asked him, was it us or his computer? And he said he thinks it's him. So, are you there, Mitch? Have you come back on at all?
His screen says I'm away.
Okay.
Currently.
All right. So, being that the case, if Mr. Luckhart's not voting, then obviously, our alternate, Allison, will be voting as well. Then she will be voting in absent if he's away. Okay. I just have a few comments. Obviously, the last time we were here, the big question was the fire department, and that was resolved shortly after our last meeting. And then we got the okay from the stormwater department, which we received, I think it was that night of the last meeting. And then, I know, talk about the fence. I was happy to see the fence, just to break up the barrier area a little bit. I know when you look at the 10 feet compared to the 35, it does look very dense and intrusive. But they tell you, it meets the height requirement, or you like. Even if we like it or don't like it, if it meets the requirement, then we don't set the zoning, the city council does, and we have to abide by that. So, because when you have the buildings at 10 and all of a sudden it goes up to 35, obviously, it's going to be, you know, just look completely, completely different in the neighborhood. But on the plans-wise, I think, looking at all the comments we've had by staff, staff was in favor of it. I know they still have to go before conservation. They got the approval from the zoning that we didn't have control of. I know they're willing to put more trees on the island, I mean, on the trees and shrubs on the southern and southwest corner of the property, and plant in long-term soil erosion into the wetlands. There was no traffic concerns raised by the traffic engineer. I do like the fact that they reduced it from three to two bedrooms. I think that does help eliminate the amount of cars that would be there. So, those are only, those are my comments at this time, so... So, what we have before us is a site plan and a special permit, so we have to vote for both, so...
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question?
Sure. Absolutely.
Matt Hammer. Matt, you mentioned about additional trees. What did you have in mind with the city program, just so I understand?
So, at the last meeting, we had discussed a 50-foot section over here that we could landscape in the addition of trees. And we know we can have free trees provided by the city project that are trying to incorporate these trees into projects. The applicant, Lexington Development, happens to also be a landscaping company by its origin. And we can most certainly dig all the trees, work with the city, and put these scattered through this 50-foot area adjacent to the project.
The only thing, I got the impression because of the wetlands, basically, the comment we got is there's not much you can do with the site, so I just ran, just for clarification, what we...
Yeah, I can answer that. Sorry, Mr. Fischette. So, the city has a 25-foot riparian zone, okay? So, that riparian zone really wants to be vegetated, to provide more shading and areas for habitat to support the perennial stream. So, they would be in favor of providing additional trees, but then we would continue the trees to be essentially a 50-by-50 block area. And if you wanted to plant a little more, we have no problem with that. We can, we'll have the equipment there, we can dig the holes, we can put the trees in, we can help maintain them as well, because we're now going to have water on our property from our development to ensure that they grow. We can incorporate that into the conservation filing as well. In fact, I would add those into the plan for the conservation filing. And I can work with Francesca and her team to come...
Yes. Does that answer your question, or do you have any other questions? I can jump in, too.
Yeah.
To clarify.
Yeah, if you could, please.
Yeah. So, what was, could you explain your question again? Just how, was your question, how this project intersects with conservation?
Yeah, I mean, is that, I guess, to Mr. Hammer's comment, it would be part of his submission to COMCOM, because I suspect they would have the final say in that.
Yes. So, my recommendation would be, conservation could also, similar to the planning board, approve something conditionally, but they do look favorably on adding more shrubs and trees and plantings as opposed to lawn, because it creates habitat and it's more ecologically diverse. So, I, as long as these species are appropriate, which the program that Matt is referencing is the Green and the Gateway Cities, where the Department of Conservation and Recreation from the state partners with cities across the Commonwealth, where there's a lot of urban heat islands, including Lowell, and they pick out trees that are appropriate for that specific site. So, in this case, if we were to coordinate something, they would be looking at species that are wetland-friendly and would enhance the riparian buffer, to Matt's point. So, I do think that the Conservation Commission would be amenable to that, but it would just be a matter of coordinating with DPD, because I know that this is obviously a city-owned site, so we need to make sure that what you're proposing here is not going to conflict with potential plans for the site. I'm not sure if there are, but it could be, I think that there's a way to potentially word the condition where, you know, if DPD is willing to, and if it, if this supports a vision for the site, that we could, the applicant could commit to doing the labor or providing trees or whatever, essentially coordinating with DPD to improve or enhance the natural features of the adjacent City of Lowell site.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. So, I mean, we can't make it, it's more of a explore it and if it fits and...
Yes, because I don't know. We could have a master plan for that site. I have no idea. I don't think it's going to be, I don't think that we, if anything, it would be most likely a park, to Matt's point, if the site is along a brook. There's a 50-foot, a 25-foot no-build zone, so you couldn't build anything within 25 feet. And I know that we added some parking along the street for neighborhood residents, so I'm not sure what the vision for the site is, but it's fairly limited due to its proximity to the natural resource areas.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Any other board members have any further comments? So, what's requested of the board? We have, take the site plan for us, and then this special permit?
So, just wondering if Richard's back or we have Allison to vote on it?
He's still away.
Richard's gone, so his volume wasn't working, right? So, Allison will be voting if Richard's not here. So, she'll vote as the alternate in Richard's place. Yeah, he texted me and said he had no volume. And then I asked him, was it us or him? And he said it was him, so he must have computer issues. And now Fran's saying he's not on. Nope, I'm not getting any more correspondence from him. Nope. So... Any other board members have any comments before we make a decision? No? Okay. So, what's requested of the board for the site plan?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. The applicant work with DPD to possibly incorporate the Green Gateway Cities tree program if, in fact, identified 50-by-50-foot block adjacent to the project located on the city property supports the vision for the future of that site. And still want to make this subject to final approval by the city's stormwater management plan. I know they've been working with them, but cite this complex, just as an outstanding condition. And I know the ZBA had the condition of the reflective paint on the pavement. I do have a question on that. So, what's the durability of that? Is there some sort of a maintenance program with something like that? Or is that, you know, over time, it breaks down and...
Honestly, I don't know anything about it. Maybe I should do a little research on that, but it would be incorporated into the homeowner's document for the site to maintain whatever maintenance is necessary for that.
Fran, do we have some idea of how that, does it break down over time? Is it something that...
I'm not knowledgeable about that either.
Okay. I just, because I saw it as a condition, but I'd like to have it as a perpetual condition. In other words...
Yeah.
You know, to Matt's point, but it would have to be incorporated as...
And maintained over time.
Yes, I'm going to maintain.
Yep.
Because we've run into certain newer technology like that that breaks down in Like, impervious pavement doesn't work so well when you put salt on it in New England. I know of some developers that have had some issues with that, so...
I second with those good conditions.
Okay, motions on the floor by Mr. Fischette, seconded by Allison. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition?
Yes.
No? So, the motion's for and favor and one against. So, the site plan is approved. Now, the next vote would be for the special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit incorporating the same conditions that we approved for the site plan.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Fischette.
Seconded?
Seconded by Allison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Opposition?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have four in favor, one against, so the special permit is allowed as well. Good luck, we wish you well.
Yep. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody, for speaking, and thank you for people who are watching and sent in all the comments. We appreciate your input. Thank you very much. Okay, moving along, we have a site plan on 1733 Middlesex Street. Tran Management LLC has applied to the Lowell Planning Board to expand the parking area at 1733 Middlesex Street. The property is located in the regional retail zoning district and requires site plan review approval under Section 11.4 for the alteration and expansion of a parking lot with more than 14 spaces and 4,000 square feet of impervious service. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Brian occasion from the law offices of Kevin J. Murphy, who, lucky him, is at the Celtics game tonight.
You're minding the fort.
And that's why I'm here. But I'm here representing Tran Management LLC, and the principal in that LLC is Mr. Joe Lee. That location at 1733 Middlesex Street is the home of the China Star Restaurant that Mr. Lee operates. Also with us is Matt Hammer, who is the engineer on the project. We are seeking to expand the parking lot at the location from 70 spaces to 82 spaces. There currently exists a restaurant, the China Star, that's 6,240 square feet is on the premises. It's right on Middlesex Street. There's adequate lighting, there's safety for pedestrians and motor vehicles to access the parking lot. There's landscaping that's currently there, and obviously, Mr. Lee would provide additional landscaping to beautify the area. There's no impact on any of the public utilities or services, as there isn't a significant deviation from the past usage. This just is expanding the parking to serve more patrons to Mr. Lee's restaurant. There are adequate areas for snow storage for a parking lot of its size. It doesn't have any adverse environmental effects, and Mr. Lee will work with the city on any drainage issues that may result, as a result of the expansion. And that's a brief synopsis of the application.
Anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant? Matt, you going to go over the plans or anything?
If you want him to, I would be more than happy to.
Sure. So, I guess before you get up there, the big question is the willow tree in the back, but comments say that tree is on...
The willow tree is not an issue.
Okay. Yes, I know here it says to be removed, and then staff said...
Well, we petitioned the tree warden, and the tree warden can make a difference. But if the city wants to keep the tree, we'll make sure that the tree is...
I know there was a big comment there, that was the only thing that was...
Yeah, that's the only negative that's...
Right. I figured I might as well get that out first, so...
Yeah, we're just waiting on the tree warden to make a decision. If it's a viable tree, and they determine it to be a viable tree, we will maintain the tree.
Okay. If you can just go over the plan quickly, Matt, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, so existing essentially are these spaces here, the parking area here, and an area here that was existing today. And what we're going to do is, we're going to add two spaces here to expand this area here. We're going to also increase the line typing, the line striping, to form these spaces in a better manner than they are today. We're going to remove this area here, and because this drainage is fairly technical in the way that it was originally designed, when the original special permit was granted for this... for this project, I believe in 2011, if I'm not mistaken, I have the permits with me, we're going to maintain that same drainage system by improving this area and incorporating porous pavement in order to provide the drainage necessary to expand the parking area. So we've had a meeting as of last week with the stormwater team. I went out and met on-site with the stormwater team last week as well, and we're working through the drainage approval with them for this expansion of the parking area. So we had to go with porous pavement, which is going to be a benefit, provides a more even distribution of the groundwater recharge for the area. The water, if you're not familiar with porous pavement, literally just goes through the pavement when it rains. There's no ponding or anything that occurs with this porous pavement, and we know we have underlying sands. We know that this system's going to function adequately. And with that, we're proposing to add the trees, which was originally was for the replacement of the willow tree, which I don't know if you've been out to see this willow tree.
We've been here.
But it's massive, right?
Yeah, it's huge.
It's just constantly branches are falling off. There's hanging trees coming off of this tree. And it really is a detriment to the area in terms of what it does with all the falling debris. It's really clogging up the existing drainage system right now. Yes, it's a grand tree, but it's also, some trees get to the point where they're now too big, and then they just start falling apart. I'm not an arborist, but when you go to, if you go and stand and look at this tree, you'll see numerous dead branches coming off of this tree. And it's not necessarily our tree to go and maintain it and take care of it. It just is just left to do its growing over time. We felt as though that it was better to take this tree down and replace it with numerous trees. But again, that's up to the tree warden. We're still working with the tree warden related to that. But right now, if it needs to stay, it can still stay, and we can still do the development, the site plan the way that it is. So that's an overview of the expansion of the pavement.
Yeah, I mean, the willow trees do create a lot of mess, especially after a storm. If you have a thunderstorm or something, you look at it.
Yeah.
Some people have a pool, and they had one near their yard every time a storm came through, pool was full, but it was the neighbor's tree, not theirs. So they couldn't do it. Then finally, the neighbor took it down for them.
Well, what I do know is they have a shallow root system.
Yes, they do.
And when they fall, it's usually, you know, they're usually very large. And this tree, I think, is the biggest willow tree I've ever seen. So we thought with its adjacency to the playground, into the development, that it would be better to take it down. But again, that's up to the tree warden on that.
All right, thank you. Counsel, anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant before I turn it over to the public?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. At this point in time, anybody like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. I'll turn it over to the board members. Any of the board members have any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure, Jerry.
To Matt, so if we're looking to approve what the plan here, if the willow tree stayed, what does that back portion look like then? Because right now you have a series of trees, because that's part of why we're here tonight is so you can show us how that's going to be screened. But if the willow tree stays, what?
So this, so these trees in here will have to be, come out?
Like the middle three or whatever.
Yeah, the middle four.
Middle four.
Yeah. And then the trunk is here.
Yep.
Which is that circle. That diameter is the actual diameter of the physical trunk. And the actual porous pavement will allow that aeration to still occur beneath the ground as well. So that's the benefit of porous pavement, so.
And you'll have a maintenance program in place for?
Yes, we've done a.
The porous pavement?
Yes, we've done a full stormwater report that's been submitted that has an operation and maintenance for that system.
And then I was out to the site, and you know, it's part of site plan review, and we approved the original site plan, and we talk about even screening and from the public roadways and abutis. And this is, this is actually, counsel, I just, you could see this. This is, this is the dumpster enclosure I had some real issue with because we've got Edward Street, which is the soccer fields that's right in the back. You've got people coming from other areas outside the city, other areas in the city. That's what it looked like yesterday in the morning.
Yeah, that's completely unacceptable.
Yeah.
So I'll talk to Mr. Lee about that can't happen.
No. So even from this perspective here, it looks like that enclosure is woefully inadequate. It looks like it was damaged and hasn't been repaired. And, you know, the trash is outside of the enclosure, in the enclosure, in the dumpster is overflowing.
There's a condition of that.
Yeah. So definitely would want that addressed as part of this submittal here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bichette. Any other comment? Dan, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Hammer. Mr. Hammer, I'm looking at this plan, and there's a lot of trees all around the outside of this plan. And I'm just wondering which ones are coming down and which ones are staying up?
So any trees that beyond what the willow tree is?
Yep.
Would come down. A lot of them are in disarray in terms of their physical, they're, you know, falling down or.
So how many trees are we taking down?
I don't have that physical number.
Okay. Are they on this plan?
They are here. There's two predominant trees.
Yeah, I saw those, yeah.
But the bushes over in here, we did not identify which of those would be considered a tree in terms of.
So are the two trees on the right staying?
Yes.
Okay. Those are staying.
Yep.
All right. What about the ones on the left? There's a series of trees on the left. And by the way, I thought it was really nicely done. The front side of the building, it's landscaped tremendously. It looks fantastic. I was out there yesterday. I must have just missed Jerry. But the ones on this left side where there appears to be the parking lot plus the additional parking lot, are those being removed as well?
Yes. And that's why we're doing the replacement trees.
Okay. So you've got one, two, three, four. Looks like four trees are being removed.
We have one tree here that's being removed.
Yep, I see it.
This tree here would be removed.
Yep.
So that's two.
Yep. And there's one, like where the 11 is, there's an 11 down the bottom, right where you're, yeah, right there.
That's staying.
That's staying?
Yep.
Okay, and there's one to the right of that?
That's staying.
Both of those are staying?
All of this landscape is staying.
Okay.
This tree's staying.
All right.
Yep, on that island.
I was there yesterday. There was some sort of an event. The place was jammed. It needs more parking. I would, I would just like to see the landscaping and the trees, you know, replicated, and it looks like you're trying to replicate them in the back.
We are, yes.
You're welcome. Thank you. Caleb?
Yes.
Did you have a comment?
So the balsam fir, can you describe a little bit what the tree looked like?
A balsam fir is essentially what a typical Christmas tree looks like.
Okay.
So if that helps answer, they actually grow to be very large, and they provide a better screening effect to them. So they like full sun, and we are southerly facing. So here's the, the sun's coming around this way. So these trees will flourish being evergreens. And the part of it, you know, the reason why we picked that type of tree was to provide screening, true screening.
So do they provide screen all the way to the base?
They do.
Okay.
Unless you trim them down for presents underneath.
Sure.
I'm just kidding. But they actually can grow very wide, so we want to make sure they're properly spaced. And that's why they're spaced so far apart from each other so they can really fill in that area with a true screening.
Got it. So in total, how many trees are being removed and how many are added if we count?
So I have two trees here and here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you've been over to this area, it's just full of debris in the back. So that's all going to get cleaned up. Okay. There's, it's not just, there's just trash piled up back there from people dumping things back there. And so there's two trees being removed here and here, and then there's two, three, four, five, six, seven trees replacing that.
Got it.
Yep.
One question to the, I guess you stop, like, let's say the willow tree, well, if it is counted as a public tree, trees, and it have to come down, like, I know it will need to be replaced, could this count or we have to count them separately? I know, I know the timing is kind of reversed in that sense. So that's a question. I'm just curious. I think, I think the city will have no harm to replace more trees, but we're planting a few here. So it's just a question if we ever have to review them in the future for the willow tree.
Good question, yeah.
Yeah.
Whether they have to replace them then because they put these in, or would they have you replace some other trees on the other side by where the parking area is?
Mm-hmm. So, well, for. Question for later.
Sure.
Another question is, are there going to be curb at the end of the parking or, you know, the head of the parking, I suppose, or parking blocks or like at the edge of it?
It does not need to have curbing.
Okay.
For the porous pavement goes curb, it goes to porous pavement and then transitions right to landscaping.
I see. Would there be concern of cars just parking too far out of to the landscaped area? You know, are they going to have parking blocks or?
No, they would be striped.
Okay.
And that would demarc, it's mainly going to be for some of the employees.
Got it.
It's going to be the part of the parking area that's going to be used the least amount, obviously, because it's the furthest away from the front entrance.
Okay. Oh, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Allison, any questions, comments?
No, I just know that that part of Edward's Field is always a little bit more wet than the others. So if this is improved drainage, then I think that's good.
So your middle section there was spuffed by the green? Yeah, was that, that area there is, oh, when I was up the other day, I think, I noticed most of the delivery trucks are parked there. So now they'll be parking back even further? There was a bunch of trucks there, and they all had the name of the restaurant on them.
Correct.
They seem to all park back in that area.
Right.
So they'll go back even further now?
So they'll be even further back, yes.
Yeah, I noticed in that area, I mean, you can even come out that side street, you can go to the Edward's Park, come out the other way, see a nice monument there for Eddie Walsh, true, true good friend. But yeah, so those trucks would go back even further than that.
Yeah.
I got you. And open that more up for, more for the public parking in that middle there where it's occupied by the trucks now.
Right.
Okay.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I was impressed when I was there, one of their vans, and I think 10 employees came out of the van all dressed and going in. And I was like, wow, those are cars that would have been there if they were providing their transportation for the employees. Yeah, two vans pull up, they were.
Yeah, the employees are primarily driven in.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, so like I said, the only question I had was the willow tree. So we'll see what happens with that with the tree warden. So the only vote we have on this is for the site plan?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions that the applicant repair the existing screening around the dumpster. And I, you know, it's more of a health inspection, I suspect, but in will be more mindful of the, either the having to have more frequent pickups of the dumpster or perhaps even needs a larger dumpster on site. Because I just, and if more people are going to park back there and they're walking to the restaurant, that's just, you know, not good.
You're 100% correct.
Yeah, so. And then that the applicant will work with DPD and the tree warden to determine the appropriateness of the real landscaping relative to the willow tree.
Do we need a stormwater permit?
And the, and subject to final approval by the stormwater management team.
I second the motion.
Motion's made and seconded by Caleb. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. The site plan is approved with conditions as listed by Mr. Bichette.
Thank you, members of the board.
Good luck. You should be home in time for the South East Game. See Mr. Murphy running out there in halftime.
We have two of them.
Thank you. So Fran, the question, who is our tree warden?
Our tree warden is our DPW Commissioner, Paul St. Pierre.
What's it?
Our DPW Commissioner, Paul St. Pierre is our tree warden. But the language throughout the tree ordinance is like, or they're designee. So it's him or whoever he says also possesses that authority. So he has Andy Silva is his other guy that deals with tree stuff.
Well, he's the warden, but they saw it come before us to bring the tree down, right?
Yes.
Well, I guess that was intended for like public comment if there was some concern, but I don't think we've ever had anybody come before us.
Not yet.
Which is interesting.
I mean, it's a big tree. I mean, no doubt about it.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking how many trees you knew would replace it because like, how wide did that matter?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, would.
Wow.
Would something be more pleasantly looking or less, you know, detrimental to the neighborhood or whatever?
Yeah.
You know, but obviously you'd want something there in place.
So they are pretty, but they do come down.
Yeah, they do come down, yeah. Okay, so moving along on the agenda, we have any, any updates from any of the board members or any other further comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, we did have a Lowell Forward Housing Production Plan meeting on, I believe it was June 7th. And at that time, the committee reviewed a draft version of the housing production plan. And Fran was also in attendance at that, at that meeting. And there's, I know I provided some comment. I know DPD is working in conjunction with the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments in putting this plan together. And I believe, Fran, you could, I suspect, have more up-to-date information, but shortly it will be available for public comment at some point.
Correct, yes. In the next few weeks, we're just incorporating some feedback right now, and we will be publishing a draft for review by the planning board, but also the general public and interested, I guess, housing-related partners for their comment. And then we will incorporate that feedback, and it will, just like Lowell Forward, come to the planning board for approval.
And then also, last week, NEMCOG did hold its meeting at the Lowell Telemedia Center. And with one focus in mind, it was part of our strategic planning process that we're going through at NEMCOG. We've never done that at NEMCOG before. And putting together a strategic plan for the next three years. And there were some new faces at the meeting, trying to get input from, from all of the communities that participate as members of NEMCOG. And we should have, by the fall, we should have a three-year strategic plan for the organization, which is something new and something that I've, I've felt strongly about. I think it's. I think it's something that's needed to set a direction for the organization. Thank you.
Any other board members have any further comments? If now we can entertain a motion towards your end?
Make a motion, yeah.
Motion made by Caleb, who is second. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we adjourn, and good night, and thank you very much, everyone. Let's go home, watch Celtics, you know. Eight o'clock.
Mercifully, I fell asleep before the.
That put you asleep quick.
I was like, oh my God, 50, you're done, you've been down 50 points.